This meeting is now in session. Please, everyone, rise for the presentation of the colors by the Career Center Air Force, JROTC.
[inaudible]
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 Please be seated, everyone. The cadets look fabulous and we never get a chance to thank them because we wait until they, we stand quietly till they're out the door, but they, they're doing such a great job. We love having them here and I did ask that, that message be shared with them tomorrow in class. We will now go to recognitions. Our recognition tonight is a showcase of Drew Model School students who participated in the Young Scholars Innovation Academy this summer. Ms. Wendy Pilch, our Director of Early Childhood and Elementary Education, will introduce the showcase.
Good evening. I'm honored to be here tonight to highlight the Young Scholars Innovation Academy 2017. It was developed as a collaboration between the Office of Gifted Services, Cheryl McCullough is here with us tonight, and Title One, "To Extend Learning Time and Nurture Advanced Academic Potential in Students from Diverse Cultural, Ethnic, and Linguistic Backgrounds." Through project and problem-based learning, students were provided rich learning opportunities to do real-world problem-solving. The Young Scholars model aims to welcome parents and community members as active participants in the school culture. Parents attend field trips and the Innovation Hour showcases let them go through the same challenges as their children. Young Scholars Innovation Academy began at Drew Model School with just 100 students, thanks to Kathy Genovi and her team, and grew last summer to 700 students from eight of the Title One schools. These students were from grades K through five and one of the best parts of the whole program was that 50 teachers from those eight schools were led, were trained in problem- and project-based learning methods and built their capacity to teach in this model throughout the school year. Two of my favorite quotes from teachers who were new to this type of teaching were, "This didn't actually feel like school. I wish it could be like this during the year," because students were learning moment by moment because they were authentically interested. My hope is that within the next three years, this will be what school feels like every day for all of our kids. I'm happy to introduce Kelly Heiner, our Young Scholars Coach and Curriculum Expert, who will introduce our three young scholars here from Drew Model.
Thank you, Wendy. In implementing Young Scholars Innovation Academy, one of our main goals was to enhance the capacity within the teachers so as to impact their daily instructional practices. Using rigorous curricular resources intended for high-ability learners, we wanted to provide an opportunity for both teachers and students to experience authentic project-based learning tasks within a critical and creative thinking framework. One such teacher that was impacted by her experiences in Innovation Academy joins us tonight. Christina Farrell. Was one of our first teachers to join us during our pilot of Innovation Academy at Drew Model Elementary two years ago. After teaching at Innovation Academy, her already dynamic and transformative teaching was enhanced through her incorporation of strategies and ideas learned through Innovation Academy. She so passionately believes in this work that she is now serving as the Resource Teacher for the Gifted at Drew Model School and is actively spreading the message of how impactful this work and these experiences are for all students. Tonight, I am honored to present to you three of our Young Scholars Innovators who will be sharing with you their experiences with project-based learning through Young Scholars Innovation Academy. Sabrine, Ariana, and Faris, like many of our other Young Scholars students, will certainly be disrupting our futures in the best ways possible. Tonight, you will get a glimpse into their creative and brilliant minds. So without further ado, please welcome Faris, Ariana, and Sabrine as they share not only their experiences, but their creations and ideas as well.
Good evening. My name is Ariana Farouk and I am nine years old. I'm in fourth grade at Drew Model Elementary School. Over the last two summers, I have gone to Young Scholars Innovation Academy. This summer at Innovation Academy, I learned about the problems facing Queen Anne's Island in the Chesapeake Bay as I became an environmental scientist. The problems I learned about were pollution, erosion, and the depletion of natural resources. To help with these problems, I created a preservation park for Queen Anne's Island to educate the community on how to preserve their natural resources. The park has lots of stations set up to teach people about solar, wind, and hydropower energy, how to protect the soil, and how to protect the land from pollution. From creating a preservation park, I learned how to protect our environment and how to work better with classmates. We all had different jobs and how to work together to create our project. What I liked most about Innovation Academy is that I got my brain thinking and flowing. I was able to get my creativity out and it challenged me to think outside the box. We got to use technology, too. Innovation Academy helped me get prepared for the future of learning. I liked participating in project-based learning because it makes my mind think harder and it challenges me in new ways. It also allows me to work with new people and helps me think of new ideas that I haven't thought of before. Innovation Academy is one of the best things in the world and everybody should know about it. To be part of Innovation Academy is an honor and a privilege.
I also created, for one of the challenges in Young Scholars, a boat and something for the future. This is a flying boat and what the flying boat does is that it can stand in water for at least three minutes and it can hold a Lego person and I tested it out and it actually worked. The jet, these, these right here are solar panels, helping, helping the engines go faster and making sure that the power is running. And I added some decorations out of, out of some sticks that I used to make, to make everything and I used cotton balls. It also has a decorative anchor.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Faris Abajeh and I am fourth, and I am in fourth grade at Drew Model Elementary School. For two years, I have been attending Young Scholars Innovation Academy. Young Scholars Innovation Academy has increased my thinking and has made me feel proud of myself. Last summer, I worked as an engineer to create an earthquake-resistant building. I created a building skeleton that could, that could withstand an 8.0 magnitude earthquake. This summer, I learned about the problems facing the Chesapeake Bay like pollution and erosion. To help the prob, these problems, we made our own preservation park to educate people about natural resources. In our park, we included a lake to create hydropower energy, solar panels for solar energy, and a windmill to create wind energy. I have brought some of my 3D models to show to you tonight. What I liked most about Innovation Academy was that we got to create new things. We have, we were challenged every day. We got some, we got fun STEM-building challenges like creating a boat that will float for three minutes using unconventional materials. We, we even got to help our community by collecting us, collecting and inspecting the litter and pollution around us. I liked project-based learning because I love creating and think, thinking of new ideas. I love being challenged a lot and making my brain stronger. Young Scholars Innovation Academy is a very fun place and I want everyone to know about it and everyone to come. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sabrine LaCabaile. I am eight years old. I am in third grade at Drew Model Elementary School. For the past two summers, I have attended Young Scholars Innovation Academy. Tonight, I brought with me a model of a flying house that levitates above the ground. I created this shelter because last summer, we acted as engineers to help, to help the citizens of Haiti rebuild after the 2010 earthquake that hit and destroyed much of the island. Earthquakes destroy many homes and buildings that are on the ground, but my hover shelter will levitate above the ground in an earthquake and will not get destroyed. It serves as a safe house that meets all of your needs. It has a water tank, large food supplies, kitchens, doctor offices, playgrounds, lots of beds, and bathrooms, and two floors for extra room. It levitates only a few feet above the ground so that it is easily accessible to victims. It started as a simple idea and turned into a big solution. Using the engineering design process, I started making drawings and improving them until I got my best sketch. Then I made my model. One thing I learned from Innovation Academy was that there is a solution to any problem and that if you use your brain, you can help those in need with big problems like victims of earthquakes. What I liked most about Innovation Academy was learning how to make earthquake-resistant houses and how we could help save lives in this way. We learned how to cooperate and perform teamwork. I also liked how they taught us how to protect respects and be kind to nature. I loved Innovation Academy because it was fun and educational at the same time and it inspired me to think about solutions to any problem. It was a fun workout for my brain. I highly recommend that every student in Arlington has the same opportunity I did so they can feel inspired, too.
Thank you to our three young scholars and thank you for the opportunity to come and highlight their incredible minds with you tonight.
That was amazing, amazing, you guys. Thank you so much for coming out. I know we're going to have some thank yous and a photo to take, but it looks like we've got some board comments and questions first. Mr. Lander?
Yes, I just want to say, your floating house is a great idea, but your ability to speak was what was most impressive. Of course, all three, and, and I just, I need to see your transcripts because I don't think you're in the third grade. So, we need to verify that you're actually in the third grade because if you are, I don't know if we can take credit for that. So I would, I would congratulate your parents on your confidence and your ability to, to speak into the microphone. And you didn't say "uh" one time, so congratulations.
Okay, fantastic. And let me just mention, I believe our, the staff who were involved were already acknowledged during the presentation, but I do want to thank Cheryl McCullough, our gifted supervisor, Christina Farrell, Drew Innovation Academy teacher, and of course Drew Principal Kathy Genovi for your great work in presenting, preparing tonight's presentation as well as, of course, supporting the program. Of course, we want to thank the parents and friends who came out to support these students. And could we please ask you all to stand? I, I wonder if, we love to celebrate family and I wonder if we could ask our students to please introduce their, their parents or siblings and/or siblings. Start, yeah?
Well, my mom came with me to cheer up to, to cheer us and my dad came to give us a surprise and we feel happy. And my brother came with me to watch me. My mom, Alina, came with me and my stepdad, Daniel, came with me as well to support me on presenting to all of you.
My mom came to support me and watch me presentate everything that we learned in the Young Scholars.
We, we are now going to pretend like we, the board, had something to do with how amazing this was and come and take a photo with you all. And if we could have the staff, principals, come up also for photos, the students, and we'll come down.
[inaudible]
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 We are going to proceed with announcements.
We love to have people stay for our meeting and, but, but we do understand if you would like to leave, we just ask that you do so quietly so we can proceed with our meeting. We are now at announcements. On Tuesday, October 10th, we will hold a literacy work session at 7:00 PM here in the Ed Center, Room 101. On October 17th, we will have a joint work session with the County Board on plans for a new elementary school at Reed. This will be held in the gymnasium at the Reed Building, 1644 North McKinley Road. Board members, do you have any announcements? Did they? Okay. Ms. Van Dorn?
Good evening, everybody. I think you're going to hear, I know you're going to hear from me this year a lot about transportation because I think it's something that's on the minds of all the parents and the families. I personally have just felt as if this year are, the, the density of our community in terms of vehicular traffic as well as pedestrian traffic has risen to a point where we're all cognizant of that and I, I think it's particularly an issue now that our families are back in school. We have a group in Arlington that is a joint effort between the county and the schools called the Arlington Committee on Transportation Choices and it was jointly appointed and there's some members of that here this evening. And I wanted to mention that we had a meeting last week and we had several citizens that came and spoke with us about particular examples of areas that we need to work on. But my mantra is going to be, and Mr. Goldstein, actually, I'm stealing this idea from him, we have a huge jigsaw puzzle and all of us are a piece. There is no one piece that's going to solve any or create this complete puzzle and it's something we all have to do together jointly. There's a role for parents in terms of educating children about how to safely get to school and walk to school, how to use public transportation. Also, our responsibility when we, if we do drive to school, to really abide by the rules and all of the methods that our schools have set up for drop-off at, for our children. And there's also a role for our county and they are working hand in glove with us to try to address the issues of safety at various intersections and on the buses and at bus stops. So I want to assure everybody that we really are working on these things and I think these are the growing pains of a, of an increasingly dense community. But we are very cognizant of it, that, I'd say what, what rose to my attention as a liaison to this transportation committee is the need to really look at the, the warrants, you know, what, what warrants, what kind of measures at each intersection, be it a stoplight or a stop sign or, or zebra stripes. That, that really has to be looked at cohesively as well as plans for various routes. And I can tell you that we heard an update on a review of Carlin Springs, which is of great interest to all of us and a lot of, a big effort to look at it from the north to the south about how traffic as well as particularly pedestrian safety can be assured along that route. So I wanted to let everybody know, we talked a great deal about that and it's on our minds. That, that group meets quarterly, but the staff group meets monthly and they're looking at walking maps, bus stop maps, and all of that is being taken into account and we're working on that now. I'm going to use this as an advertising time to say that we need bus drivers. We are down 23 bus drivers in the count, in APS. The salary is $14.92 to start as a trainee and $18.39 to 22.87 once you're full-time. So we need bus drivers. Now, I tried to apply this afternoon and it was, took a little bit of a journey. So you have to go on the employment site of APS, look for certified, because it's a certified position, under Transportation Services, school bus drivers. And I'm told that that might get a little bit easier, so we'll see if that can happen, but that's the route. We need bus drivers. When people are talking to us now about whether or not they can, you know, the delay in some of the routes, part of that has to do with just simply needing bus drivers. The other thing we need are school crossing guards. That pays $14.98 to $22.91 an hour. It's a part-time job. We need crossing guards. That, it, those positions are hired by Arlington County. If you're interested in that, that's a quick, relatively quick route, it took me a while. Arlington County, on the upper right corner, it says "jobs" and then it says "apply now" and you'll see crossing guards, level one. And I urge people, bus drivers, crossing guards, those are pieces of the puzzle that can help us get through this period. So please apply and you're going to keep hearing from me about this. Thank you.
All right. Any other board announcements? Mr. Goldstein?
Yes, thank you. I have an announcement. If you read the October 2nd Washingtonian article, it names our Chair, Barbara Cannonan, as the, in the list of the 100 most powerful women in the Washington area. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. General interest item. And congra, offer my congratulations.
All right, thank you. I, I do have to say, moving here almost 25 years ago, I never would have dreamed that that would have happened to me. And of course, as we all know, this is a testament to the great teamwork we do as a board and just the great work we're doing in Arlington Public Schools. We're very visible. Washington is noticing. Thanks so much to the superintendent, excellent staff, and of course, our teachers and you see what our teachers are doing in our classrooms every day. So we have a fantastic school system and I'm very, very proud that that's been recognized by the Washington, Washingtonian Magazine. Thank you. Anything else? Dr. Murphy?
Thank you. So September 30th has come and gone and that is the watermark for us here, really in Arlington, but across the state for all school divisions as far as the official enrollment. And that is really what the basis is for then, you know, budget planning and also planning for next year's projections. And so I want to give folks an update as far as where we are. I also found out this little factoid you may recall and have seen over time that we have a line graph that shows that in 1963, that was the period of time that Arlington Public Schools had the largest student population and it was actually 26,927 students. So this afternoon, it was shared with me that we have eclipsed that watermark of 1963 with the official enrollment for September 30th of 26,941. So we see that overall, that's a three percentage point growth, but when we break that down by level, we're recognizing at the elementary level, we had an increase of 2.8 percentage points. We had the largest growth, slightly over four percentage points at the middle school level. And then, then at the high school level, it pretty much mirrored what was going on at the elementary school level of 2.6%. I do want to make you aware that we will ebb and flow throughout the year and based on where we were with projections, we were about 350 students off. We had projections over 27,000. But that's where we sit right now that'll be used for planning purposes as we, we move forward. And thank you to staff and also thank you to our folks in schools for helping us, you know, calculate this and bring this forward to you. It's hard to believe that we are just about halfway through the first quarter. And so, well, we've got a number of events coming up for middle and elementary school parents with teacher conferences here at the end of October. November 6th is the end of the first quarter and then we will also have a teacher-grade prep day on November the 7th. So my message to principals on Monday morning was to begin having conversations with their students, kind of around their goal-setting. Are they making the progress? Has the year progressed as they've planned and, you know, what other adjustments do we need to make? And that's really for all of us. So kind of thinking, you know, looking up, as I like to say, making a little bit of an assessment and any adjustments that are necessary and then continuing on with the rest of the, rest of the grading period. October is Dyslexia Awareness Month and we have a dyslexia conference coming up later in October on the 28th. We're going to be at Kenmore and that's from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, so we encourage folks to, to stop by. We've got some keynote speakers coming, most notably Muhammad Ali's daughter, who is going to be speaking with the, the group and they're going to be talking about topics such as understanding dyslexia and ways you can support the dyslexic learner, essential strategies for teaching mathematics to dyslexic learners, the Orton-Gillingham method, reading interventions, and using technology to support learning and more. So we encourage our families to come out to this event. October also is Bully Prevention Month and throughout October, APS is recognizing Bully Prevention Month by promoting prevention through a variety of activities and communications. And we've been using the hashtag #BekindOnline to connect messages to our students. I also want to share just a couple of examples and these are just examples. There's a host of different things going on at a number of our schools around kindness and compassion. Our K through eight students receive lessons by school counselors on bully prevention and those same lessons at each grade level are taught at elementary and middle school. Our Nottingham Principal and Assistant Principal do a read aloud about bully prevention in all grade levels. Claremont is holding- Claremont is holding a parent anti-bullying evening event on October the 12th and doing a school-wide assembly. And then Yorktown is hosting Rachel's Challenge, and this is about a student who passed at one of the schools, and Rachel's Challenge is really a nonprofit organization that is focused on reducing violence. So we kind of want to continue to bring this forward in having our students practice kindness and compassion. Some of you may have heard this week that we had a site visit from the National Baldrige Team, and we're very excited and proud of that. And I want to start off by saying thank you to the entire Arlington Public School staff that participated in that. We had teachers, we had bus drivers, we had custodians, we had members of our administrative team, both centrally and school-based, as part of that. And so this is an opportunity for kind of, as Dr. Cannonan said, you know, we're very proud of the things we do, but at the same time, we know we can continue to improve. The hope is the feedback that we get from the site visit, similar to other endeavors that we had, will help us continue to strengthen the processes we have here and also some of our results. The anticipated feedback is going to probably be coming later in November, so we'll be sharing some of the things that the site team shared with us. And again, I just want to say to the entire folks that were involved in that and supported that, thank you. I think it was very fruitful, and people were very excited about it and proud about the things that we do here. Okay, coming up on October the 12th at the Central Library, we have a Arlington County-sponsored Community Town Hall, and this is about family resources that prevent substance abuse. We want to encourage our folks to come out. We are a cosponsor of this event, and we're partnering with the county as well as the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. And the focus here is on substance abuse prevention, increasing concerns both nationally and locally about this. So we want to join, we encourage folks to come and join in the discussion so there can be an understanding, also a little bit of recognition, and what action might you take at your home, working with your students, and actions we're taking here at school as well. I also want to encourage folks, if you're a fan of podcasts, and I know Mr. Lander is one, along with myself, we listen to a variety of podcasts, but Arlington has endeavored into this with What's Up APS, and so I encourage you to kind of sign on to that. I think our inaugural or our first podcast featured our Virginia State Teacher of the Year from Wakefield High School, Michelle Cottrell-Williams, so you may want to tune in and listen to that. But we're going to also be listening on future podcasts here, talking, how to talk with your child about substance abuse. We've got the APS College and Career Night coming up on Tuesday, October the 17th. I do want to make a note, it is going to be held at Wakefield High School, and as I shared last time, students are along a continuum at various different places, whether they're seniors and pursuing applications to various colleges, or if they're younger and they're just beginning to look at opportunities for post-secondary options. So there's different things here for different families, depending on where they are, and we encourage folks to come out. If you're a little bit younger, you may want to just kind of dip your toe into this experience and get a better understanding of how the evening works, but it's very exciting. And, you know, we've got a number of colleges and universities that are planning to come out. We've got two other celebrations coming up later in October. The first is the Wilson Building Event, which is Thursday, October the 19th, and that's going to be from 10:30 to 11:30. So we encourage not only school folks to come out to this, but also neighbors and community. And if you are planning to attend and would like to join us, there's parking, there's parking behind Fire Station Number 10 that morning, and this is kind of kicking off that project, which is slated to have that building open in the fall of 2019. Later in the month, we've got the start of Alice West Fleet Elementary, and that's going to be the new home for Henry Elementary, and that is from 10 to 11 AM. And if folks are going to be coming out to that, we encourage them that we will be meeting neighbors as well as community members there at the entrance to the Jefferson School Auditorium. So we look forward to seeing you out at those events. We've got Harvesting Dreams for Our Children, kind of a culminating event for Hispanic Heritage Month on Friday, October the 20th. That event has only continued to grow. You can see that we're using social media, hashtag APSHHM. Last year, I believe, we had over 500 families and students come out and participate, and we're looking to eclipse that again this year. And then finally, I believe all of us are looking forward to a three-day holiday coming up this weekend with Monday being a holiday. And then you can see, we've got some early release dates for high school on October the 11th, for middle school and high school on the 18th, and then for elementary on the 25th, and some of that is related to the parent-teacher conferences. So I will stop there and just say thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We are now ready to act on our consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, five to zero. We have some wonderful things that just happened in that moment. As part of the consent agenda, the board made a number of appointments. First, I'm pleased to announce that Shannon Ellis has been appointed Interim Supervisor of Mathematics. Shannon, there she is. Shannon has been a math teacher, then Math Instructional Resource teacher and coach. She has also served as an assistant principal in APS. Shannon is respected as someone who is knowledgeable, collaborative, forward-thinking about outcomes, and supportive of the personal and professional growth of others. Her passion and excitement for helping students understand mathematics has always been at the forefront of her work. And her ability to see the content from pre-K to the secondary level will serve her well in the role of interim supervisor of mathematics. Do I understand you have some folks here to support you this evening? We'd love to meet them.
I have my wonderful husband of 20 years, Norm.
All right. And then I have, of course, my husband. Great.
Excellent.
Principal Harper, yes, yes, right. Okay, and next, I'd like to announce that Kimberly Kim Jackson-Davis has been appointed as interim assistant principal at Washington Lee. There she is. This is what we love. Kim is a graduate of APS. She has also been in education for close to 20 years and has served at all three levels. As a teacher, she has demonstrated a strong understanding of effective instruction. With a degree in school counseling, Kim has also served as a counselor, supporting the whole child and working to increase parent participation and community involvement in education. Kim is dedicated, passionate, and demonstrates excellent decision-making and initiative. Her well-rounded experiences as a teacher and counselor will make her a great addition to the Washington Lee team in this interim role. Congratulations. If I understand correctly, you have several people to introduce us to.
I have my friend, Constance Lewis. I have my mother-in-law, De'akus Davis, and my wonderful and lucky husband. My son, Kobe Davis, my nephews, James and Jordan, and my closet twin, first of all, make sure I bring you my mouth, Fran and Claire Peters is here to support me from Washington.
From Washington, yes.
I love it. Your bet. And my closet twin, Carolyn Clark.
Thank you, that's great. We were wondering who brought all these people here tonight.
That's right.
It's all you. Finally, I'm pleased to announce that we're appointing Antonio Tony Hall as assistant principal at Swanson Middle School. Tony has been an educator for over 15 years, most recently as assistant principal at Washington Lee. At WNL, Tony led the English and Science Departments, working to enhance collaborative learning teams that support positive outcomes for students. Tony has worked to increase minority student enrollment in advanced placement and IB classes in both English and Science. He has collaborated with colleagues to diversify the literature in English classes to reflect minority student populations and increase their engagement. In Science, he's been a leader in expanding blended learning opportunities and personalized learning for all students. Tony aspires to be a middle school principal and has taken this opportunity to return to the middle school level to strengthen his skills while continuing to support instruction and the social-emotional learning of students. Do you have folks supporting you here this evening?
Uh, yes.
Here she is, Principal Harper.
I actually have Rebecca Harper and the administrative team from Swanson.
Shannon, Shannon. No, you didn't try. Nah.
I have my current administrative colleague, Claire Peters, from Washington Lee High School.
Yes.
And actually, I have known Kim Jackson-Davis and her sister Carolyn Clark from my teaching days at Swanson Middle School. So I have known them personally and professionally for many years.
Excellent.
I'm honored to thank Washington Lee, and I'm so excited to be with this administrative team at Swanson.
Excellent.
Thank you so much. That's terrific. Thank you all so much for coming out to support these really terrific administrators. Finally, as part of our consent agenda, we have made an appointment to the Advisory Council on Instruction. Meredith Purple has been appointed to serve as co-chair. She will join Tina Koklinsky-Miller, who's been co-chair since June of 2016. We look forward to working with both of you, you and Tina, throughout the school year. Thank you for coming, Meredith. Okay, and once again, I would like to share that we do love for people to stay for our full meeting, but we understand if it's, if you would like to move on with your evening, we do ask that please refrain, we're going to move right on, so if you could talk to your friends when you get out into the hall, that's most helpful to us. So as they're doing that, let's just move right on. It is time to hear a citizen comment on non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers on non-agenda?
We have six speakers.
Six speakers, okay. So let me go ahead and read the speaker guidelines. The school board welcomes public comment. Generally, school board members do not respond to comments during the meetings. If they've not already signed up online, speakers must submit a speaker slip to the clerk before the agenda item they wish to speak on is called, meaning like now. Each speaker may speak for up to two minutes. There's a timer to help you keep track of your time, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the buzzer sounds. All comments should address a matter related to Arlington Public Schools. Speakers should be courteous and address their comments to the entire school board. Speakers are called in the order in which they signed up. If you have written comments, please give them to the clerk. We ask the audience to refrain from applauding as it takes time from our speakers, and our tradition is to use the silent knock, which is nicely visible and allows us to move efficiently through our meeting. Madam Clerk, would you like to call the first speaker?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is Jamie Bellitz. You can hand it to me, and I'll make sure they.
Oh, that way.
I'm trying to read it as fast as I can. Good evening, Madam Chairperson and distinguished board members. My name is Jamie Bellitz. I live at 4402 19th Street North here in Arlington with my family, my wife, Melody Curtis, and my daughter, Sarah Bellitz. I am a decorated, disabled veteran from two wars, and I share being disabled with my daughter who attends Washington Lee. She was so motivated by the staff there that she started her own organization called Sarah's Kids, and you can find out more about it at sarahkids.us. That's not why I'm here tonight, but the reason I'm here tonight is mainly because, oh, and I'm also a member of SEPTA. And being in SEPTA and being part of a network and now being part of a new nonprofit, that I get a chance to visit with a lot of people, not only here in Arlington, but across the United States, visit with Congress and the courts, and have kind of boned up on it over the past four or five years because of my daughter and her activism and mine. And children here in Arlington, I've learned, who have special needs are being denied support They're being told that the IEP only extends to the walls of the classroom and doesn't extend beyond that. That perhaps, maybe they may be entitled to a few things because of the ADA, but I believe the courts and the Congress in their intent, idea, saw that it was very important. So I just wanted to call that to your attention, Madam Chairperson, so maybe somebody can look into it here.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Yasmina Hassan.
Good evening. I'm Yasmina Hassan, and I'm here to share with you a challenging experience with the gifted program. My daughter goes to Thomas Jefferson Middle School and was referred by one of her teachers to the program. The resource teacher there took three months and finally came with the decision that my daughter wasn't eligible in any gifted area. This was all to me since she was referred by her English teacher. She had been in gifted math since fourth grade. Her SOL scores indicated that she passed advanced sixth-grade math in fifth grade. I checked with the resource teacher if she included the points in her 90-days review, and to my dismay, she wasn't aware of any of them. In fact, she didn't have my daughter's SOL results. When I mentioned to the resource teacher that I will escalate the issue with the principal, she asked me to wait as she will take another look. She called me back 10 minutes later, indicating that she reversed her decision, and my daughter is now gifted in math. At this point, I wondered what other subject my daughter is actually gifted in but needed a 10-minutes review with her teacher. So I went ahead and escalated the issue to the principal, who was truly concerned, and escalated the issue to the supervisor of the gifted program. And this was where the issue really took a turn for the worse. I had two phone conversations with the supervisor, during which she had no interest in the actual problem, and her only concern was to defend the resource teacher. I appeal before you today, not for an isolated issue with my daughter, however, with a systemic negligence that affects all of our children. Our kids work hard to excel at the different subjects. The gifted program is one way to award and push them further in life. With the current negligence in place, if a parent doesn't have the time or the resources to continuously follow up with the gifted program administration, their kids may never get placed into such program they deserve and earn with their hard work. I ask you to look further into this issue, and I am happy to provide documentation that validates all of the claims I have made here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joshua Folb.
And friend.
No, no, you don't touch anything. You just, you have to stand here, that's all you. So tonight, I'm just Michael's dad. About a week or so ago, parents got an email from APS apologizing for the state of buses and ultimately laying the blame on the shortage of drivers. Nancy spoke about that. They assured us that they are doing all they could to remedy the problem. Having been a bus driver myself in a former life, and am open to getting my license again if asked, I wondered if the APS recruiting method is matching the type of job we are recruiting for, so I looked around. I started looking to Facebook advertising, couldn't find anything, neither with promoted tweets. Both of these are different from APS simply putting their messages on their own page. Yes, it costs money, but when it came to recruiting, Jeff Arnot for Brevard Florida Adult Ed Found, a tenth of a traditional ad spend on new media gave 10 times the results. Then I moved to Craigslist and was excited to find a school bus driver ad in Arlington for Bishop O'Connell. Snagajob.com is one high school kids use, but also jobs for certified positions like bus drivers, but none from APS. Both are places we should be for all our service jobs. Next, we move to the APS communication tools, and I can't recall any flyer being pushed out through Peachjar or School Talk, and if it has, this rather well-engaged parent doesn't know about it. Next, how about huge banners in our Joint Use Rec Centers advertising the need for drivers? Nothing there either. While the pay could be better, the schedule is ideal for parents with. While the pay could be better, the schedule is ideal for parents with kids in school. Finally, with Fort Meyer and the Pentagon right here and Fort Belvar nearby, why aren't we working with the family support offices to recruit the families of our dedicated service members in our community? The talent is here, let's reach out. I remember only one thing from my seventh grade education. In planning an event, transportation is your number one issue, because if people can't get there, nothing else matters. APS has acknowledged the problem, but now it's time to solve the problem. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ella Godbout.
Good evening, Arlington County School Board members. My name is Ella Godbout, and I am a seventh grader at Thomas Jefferson Middle School. I'm here tonight to ask for your support regarding the dangerous intersection of South Second Street and South Irving. I cross at this intersection every morning and every afternoon as I'm walking to and from school. There are too many times that the cars will continue to drive through the intersection while my friends and I are already crossing. It makes it very difficult to figure out when it's safe to cross the street because the cars are very unpredictable. I believe each one of you chose to be on the School Board because you care about the students and our safety. In just two days, we got 285 signatures from students and teachers at TJ. I ask that you please not ignore our voices, as we are the ones most affected by the danger of this intersection. We are asking Arlington County for a four-way stop and a crossing guard. We would appreciate a letter of support advocating our position, because the School Board's recommendation would carry a lot of weight with Arlington County. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Liz Fried.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Liz Fried, and I'm a TJ parent and also an Arlington Heights resident. And I'm here tonight to continue to press for solutions at the dangerous intersection at South Second and Irving, and ask the School Board to make good on promises that it made to the community during the siting and planning phases of the New Fleet Elementary School. We were assured countless times by APS and county officials during that planning process that traffic issues would be addressed, but the only changes at the start of school were the relocation of the Kiss and Ride and the bus drop-off to Second Street, effectively increasing traffic on already congested corridor without providing any traffic calming mechanisms. I realize this board is not the ultimate decision-making, is not the ultimate decision-maker in this process. However, as we've been told before, it's a collaborative process, and we would like you to submit a letter in support of the, to expedite traffic calming measures at the intersection by requesting a four-way stop and an additional crossing guard to DES and the Police Department. And we do know that there is an applicant who has put in an application from Arlington Heights, so a letter from you all would be very helpful. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Stephanie Chong.
Thank you for having me this evening. I am also here in support of crossing guard and traffic calming measures at the corner of Second Street and Irving Street. I am a TJ middle school parent, an Arlington Heights resident, and I do recognize that you are not the ultimate decision-makers, but do know that you are part of the puzzle, as was mentioned earlier, and hope that you will appeal for an additional, and I highlight the word additional, crossing guard. There was a letter by Reed Goldstein early on, and I do appreciate APS's quick response to the neighborhood's concern about that intersection, but the last bullet on that letter was reexamining the crossing guard at Second Street and Old Glebe. And I just want to ask and appeal to you to request an additional crossing guard. Please do not remove the crossing guard at Second and Old Glebe. It is a very dangerous intersection. It is very dangerous at Irving as well, but there are, my daughter goes to TJ, and the first week of school, her friend almost got hit by one of the trucks because she wasn't used to the whole crossing business, and it was the crossing guard who intervened quickly, and it became a giggle moment in our house over dinner that evening instead of a disaster. And I just really want to stress the paying attention to our community as well as being a part of the puzzle. Are there other creative solutions that we could come up with to address that, whether it's through neighborhood volunteers or whatever, to make sure that our kids are safe at the intersections on Second Street? So, I thank you very much for your time and for your commitment to our children.
Thank you all so much for coming out tonight. We will now move on to our monitoring items. We have three monitoring items. The first is the superintendent's update on the 2017-2018 action plan. Dr. Murphy. Go Nationals, Michael. Right? We're going to win.
All right. Thank you. I want to provide a little bit of an update on some of the things that are in motion in relationship to the 2017-18 action plan. As I've shared with you before, we have a host of different planning documents here that demonstrate the long-term planning that we have in place in relationship to many of the projects and initiatives we have before us. The one piece that I will sort of highlight that I don't think here is represented, but I want to draw, you know, provide a little bit new information and draw some folks' attention to the master planning document, and that is something that I think if you haven't had the opportunity to look at that, that really does lay out a little bit of forward thinking about some of the things that we may be looking at in the future. And I do want to thank that group, it was several years ago that they put that report together, to kind of think out long-range about some of the things that we need to begin to either plan for or think about in our future, along with many of the other supporting documents that we have here. As we made mention, the focus continues to be on providing the best learning experiences for children. We see with my comments earlier with announcements, enrollment growth continues at a pretty good pace, and then coupled with that, many of the things that we are addressing right now are very complex and overlapping. The most clear example of that is how we've tiered some of the decisions around boundary changes for this coming year. There are essentially four areas that the action plan projects fall into, under new policies and policy revisions, operational planning, preps for new school and program moves, and then capital initiatives. And I'm going to speak in a little bit of detail to each one of those here in just a minute with those that are kind of moving forward or in motion. As I'll remind everyone, Engage with Us, the Engage website, we keep that up-to-date and relevant based on either activities that are happening or things that we need to post. So, while there are one-pagers there, there are also schedules of calendars and also outlining what the various decision points are along that way, and we continue to use that as a resource for updating information. So, with new policies and procedure revisions, what we're going to have coming a little bit later as far as the strategic planning process, and actually, we've got that as a monitoring item this evening, that we'll be addressing some of the issues around options and transfers. We also have a number of other policies that are slated and included that we'll be talking about throughout the year. We are also, have a variety of, you know, boundary moves as well as move of programs, and specific with the boundary moves at the middle school level that we're addressing here in the fall. We had two meetings this past week, and thank you for the folks that came out to that. We had very good attendance and good input. We'll be coming back here later in October on the 25th at Yorktown, as well as the 26th at Wakefield for what we heard and giving the community a little bit of, some feedback on what we gathered at those meetings on the 2nd and 4th. I'll be coming forward then with my recommendation on November the 14th as a result of those two engagements with the community. And then we have the public hearing slated for November 30th, and the board then is slated to take action on those recommendations on December the 14th. When we look at operational planning, a little bit later tonight will be, or actually, the next item on our agenda this evening is the strategic planning process, and Dr. Tara Natress is going to be presenting that information with the instructional focus that we have with our strategic plan, as well as Lisa Stingle, who's going to be talking a little bit about the process. We've got a number of annual activities with the budget, the Arlington Facility and Student Accommodation Plan, as well as capital planning that will happen later this spring. And then there are several capital initiatives that are also slated. I'll speak to two of those this evening. Most significantly, the Career Center, which we are having the Joint Facility Advisory and our Facility Advisory hosting a meeting on October 11th, and they're really looking at two elements here. The first, identifying additional considerations that have not already been identified in the School Board's motion with the Career Center. And then coupled with that, should the superintendent focus on the Career Center as a fourth high school? So, those pieces will be in motion at that October 11th meeting, and then the School Board, after its joint meeting with the County Board, where we're slated to discuss this, will be coming forward with an information item on November 2nd, and then action slated right now for November the 14th. So, that really addresses the Career Center. When we look at the Educational Center, we are looking at Phase One of this with defining the instructional program. We've got it October the 18th, community input, looking at three options, superintendent's recommendation, then coming the first part of November, and School Board action slated for November the 14th. And then from that, as a result of that, November the 30th, the board will have slated the building-level planning committee for this particular site, and then moving forward with renovation. So, as I always like to say, a number of things that are slated here for the fall as well as the spring, and a number of things also that are sort of connected or integrated with how one decision then builds on another. So, I will stop there.
Okay. First, can I ask Ms. Elliott, do we have any speakers? Okay. Board colleagues, questions, comments on the superintendent's update? No questions? All right. I have one. I do want to ask about the middle school boundaries schedule, if you don't, if you want to pull that up quickly. I just want, I think the community would like to know, when you get to the next step, what we heard, October 25th and 26th, at that point, will, let me back up and clarify something we're hearing people talk in the community. As we expected, some people think that the scenarios, the boundary scenarios that have been presented might be the actual proposals, and they're not, and I think you've made that very clear, but, you know, that sometimes the telephone game kind of plays out differently. So, we have no proposals we're really considering now. Will we, when you go to this next step on the 25th, 26th, at that point, will you be presenting scenarios that will be part of our choice set, or are you, what are you presenting at that point?
At that point, we think we'll have better scenarios. What we put out at the meetings this week was really for starting a conversation and getting the feedback on things that we might not have considered. When we come back on the 25th, what we'll have is what we believe are better options that begin to take into account what we hear from these meetings and from the community input that we're getting right now. So, what we provided this week was really a starting point to help them understand the policy and how the policy considerations lay out, along with some blended maps that begin to look at options, but none of them are a scenario that we go with right now.
You will have new scenarios, and they will be closer to what we really will be considering?
Yeah.
Okay. That's very helpful. Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah. Thank you. So, let me just pick up on that for a second. And then on the, what is it, the 26th? Yeah. Then, based on what you have, then there'll be another round of community, you'll be... I wrote that really quickly, yeah. So, the community will have a chance to react to what you've done in response to what they've reacted to in the last two days?
Yes. Yeah.
Good. I just wanted to get that clear, because I know there's a lot of confusion out there. I do want to say, I went to the, both sessions, at Yorktown and at Kenmore this week, and I found them to be very well-planned, very well-executed. I heard that from a lot of people there. They were very well-attended. I think, I don't know, did you give a number? I was going to say 75 to 100 people?
Yeah, at each one.
At each one. They were all very well-engaged. I heard some really good and interesting comments from folks. I was very impressed with the preparation by the staff, and also that you had reached out and gotten facilitators from school staff who aren't normally on your, they're not normally on the planning team, but they were doing a great job with the folks at their table. The question I got, probably more than any other, was, does this really make a difference? Does the community engagement make a difference? And I kept reiterating that there is no predetermined answer or conclusion in the staff's mind and in the board's mind about this, and we're just waiting, looking to see how this is going to play out. So, I just want to take that opportunity to say that again to anybody who's listening, that there is no predetermined, there's no answer in the back of the book.
No. No answer.
Thank you.
And Dorn.
I just want to add one point to Mr. Goldstein's comments, and I did remark this to the people, staff members who were there. The collaboration with the county at that meeting was phenomenal. It was a team. You had a team of schools and county staff members who were enjoying working together, enjoying interacting with the community, doing it in an incredibly productive way, and it was just wonderful to see, because we're always being asked, and the county and the schools work more closely together, and I think we're doing that better and better every time. And I know you were key to making that happen, so thank you very much.
Great. And Ms. Toledo.
I just want to add one final thing, that for all of those of you who are watching us at home, you have another opportunity to watch more TV about the school system and watch these two meetings. They're being streamlined. The one from October 2nd is already on Engage APS, and the one on October 25th will also be online to watch. So, you can put on your pajamas and popcorn and see how we are going to be looking at boundaries, and then get online from the comfort of your home and provide us input. And you will have until November 3rd to do that online. We are reading everything, so please, please keep that informed. And also, send comments to, thank you, Mr. Goldstein, send comments to engage@apsva.us. And if we're going that route, you can also call 703-228-6310, leave a voicemail. And finally, you can go to the website, hit translate and have it translated into any language you need. You can leave a voicemail in any language, and we have people who can translate those voicemails. You can write emails in any language, and if it is not our traditional five languages, please provide what language it is so that we can have it translated. We want to hear your input. We can serve you if you help us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toledo and board colleagues. Yeah, the streaming has been a really nice innovation. We do get a lot of people, people are kind of laughing about the pajamas and popcorn, but people do it. People, we definitely have viewers out there, and so that's been great. And I'll just echo what everyone said about, it really was, we have heard great feedback from those evening events. And with my question earlier, you know, we have a lot of community members out there who are doing a great job communicating with others, and we have ambassadors in our schools that are sharing information, and, you know, I wanted to clarify, because folks are paying attention, and then they clarify with others, and it's really helping everyone understand what we're doing. And especially, again, echoing everyone's comments that, you know, we're looking forward to improving and getting closer to our actual scenarios as we go. We absolutely do not have scenarios in the back room that we've all decided, you know, predetermined are going to be in the final thing. So, thank you for that, and we will now move on to our next item, which is an update on the 2018-2024 strategic plan process. Dr. Murphy.
Yes, I'm going to just turn here to Dr. Tara Natress, our Assistant Superintendent for the Department of Teaching and Learning, and to talk a little bit about kicking off the strategic planning process and how that's going to begin to unfold. the strategic planning process and how that's going to begin to unfold, coupled with Lisa Stingle, who's going to come back and talk a little bit about the calendar and some of the processes around that. So, Dr. Naturis, I'll turn to you as our Instructional Leader.
Good evening. So I am excited to be here this evening to launch our 2018-24 Strategic Plan Process. I think Dr. Cannon and I both get really excited about this work because it really guides our work as a system, and it is an incredibly important process for our division and for our community, and it's reflected all over the room that we're standing in, right? So this process is going to impact our work over the next several years. And so it is a very important and very exciting process. So our goals with the strategic plan is that we really develop our new six-year strategic plan for APS. And through that process, we will be defining our goals and strategies to overcome our continuing challenges as we're thinking about what are our opportunities for improvement, considering where we aspire to be in the next five to 10 years, really charting a course to meet the changing needs of life, learning, and work for our students. And we're hoping to address the needs and aspirations of our community as well as our division. And we are going to be seeking quite a bit of community input as we engage in this work. We will have a steering committee as well as opportunities throughout the course of the year for the community to engage with us in this process. So I'm going to turn things over to Lisa Stingle, who's going to go through the actual agenda over the course of the year and what the structure will look like for our work.
So if you went to Engage Saturday, you probably already get a chance to see we've been piloting our first activity, which will help us gather priorities from the community. We also have had more than 100 applications for the steering committee. That window's closed. We're now looking at putting together the group, so it really does represent the community. So we hope to get information out to those people next week, as soon as we have dates. A lot of people are really concerned about when the meetings are, so we want to make sure we have that before we send out that information. Well, we're kicking off tonight, and the steering committee, we hope, will begin its work at the end of this month. And then over the course of this month and next month, we will begin reaching out to advisory committees to actually gather their input on what should be on our priorities for the strategic plans. So the activity that we piloted will actually be launched with all of our groups. We'll be actually trying to use it in schools and other places with the community. We also had it at our middle school boundary meetings. And we'll post it online once we be in that work. In January, there'll be a work session with the, between the steering committee and the School Board. In February, we'll put out the drafts at that point and get feedback again from the same advisory committees, staff, students, and others, and put the information online to see comments. In April, we'll see, again, another round. We'll have more work done on the draft plans and moving it further along in the process. And again, we'll go through the same process to get input from the community on it. And then we come back to the School Board in May to give you an information item, and again, in June for adoption. So there are going to be multiple ways to participate. We'll be communicating these opportunities as we move through the process, through our School Talk messages, through our ambassadors, who are actually, we're seeing them at these events, and they've been great. They are actually getting the words out to their communities in ways that they reach them that we may not. We'll be sending it through advisory committees, and again, putting it online on Engage. So you can follow the work. We've started to build the page, the, if anybody wants to see the charge, it got posted. And we'll be rolling out the meetings and the resources that the group will be using so people can follow along, find out where we're meeting, see the agendas, and be able to participate or come in to watch what's going on.
That's it. Thank you so much. Ms. Elliott, any speakers? Okay, Board Colleagues, questions and comments? Questions or comments? Ms. Van Dorn.
When will we know who comprises the steering committee?
We're finalizing that work now, and Ms. Stingle probably has a more accurate date.
We're hoping to do it by, I was hoping tomorrow. We're still trying to get some of the staff pieces in place to make sure that we've got enough teachers, enough of the other scales, so we're still working on it.
How will the community be informed about who's on the steering committee, and where will they be able to address that information so that they can contact people if they're interested? When you do it, I'm not, I know I'm anticipating the future, but I think people want to know this.
We'll be posting the names online, like we've done with our ambassadors, so people can see who the members are, and we'll be, so we'll be reaching out to them first. I want to make sure they see the dates and are able to say if they can participate first. So once we get confirmation.
Let me, let me just, no, you're fine. Let me just add this. As Ms. Stingle said, we're finalizing the list. We're going to be reaching out to that initial group. We'll also be reaching out to those folks that were not selected to let them know that there will be activities or other ways that they can participate or be involved. So that's another option as well. Ideally, we wanted to have this all wrapped up by tomorrow, but it looks like it's probably going to be the first part of the week. So folks are going to be getting some type of notification here, maybe as early as tomorrow, but definitely by the start of the first of the week. And then what we will do is we will post the final list of those individuals. All this is going to reside on the Engage website, and as Ms. Stingle and I think Dr. Naturis indicated, we already have the charge up on Engage, and that's been launched.
The reason I'm making a point of this is that people like to talk to people in their community and the people they know and are connected with. And I know that you're doing a diligent job to make sure that this group reflects the community, and I know you'll do a great job at that. But then people need to know who's on it. They need to know, not just to write to a website, but if there's a friend or a person or someone they know who represents or they've dealt with, that they can reach out to them. And if we can involve those additional 100 people or however many it is, that's great. But people want to know who's on it, so if we can, it could be not just a passive effort, but rather an active effort to communicate that. I think people would appreciate knowing, because this really matters. This is laying the foundation for the next six years, so.
So on Thursday, School Career Relations is pushing out an engagement email, the School Talk email, and maybe we'll add that next week if that's, if we're close enough at that point, and also put it in with the ambassadors so people can see that at their schools.
Anyone else, questions? So let me, Mr. Goldstein? Okay, and let me just confirm for those listening, this is a Superintendent and Staff process. The Superintendent is appointing this steering committee. We, as a School Board, are not appointing the steering committee. You've already posted the charge on the Engage page so people can see what it's about. The steering committee is the core group that will be going through this process, but there are, as you pointed out in this presentation, and I'm sure it's also on the Engage page, that there are many ways that committees and people will be able to participate. And we, as a School Board, will be keeping in close touch as well. We will have, on a rotating basis, people sort of liaising with the committee, and as you pointed out, we'll have a work session or two, and keep in close touch. So it's going to be a great year, great effort. Any final comments? Otherwise, we will go on. Okay. One last monitoring item then, thank you very much. And this is an update on Library Services. Dr. Naturis, Dr. Murphy, Dr. Naturis.
Good evening again. So I am very excited to introduce Teresa Flynn, our Supervisor of Library Services. She's going to share a lot of the work that has been done over the course of the last year, as well as with our start to the school year. So as Dr. Murphy alluded to in his announcements, we're about halfway through the first quarter, and there are all kinds of great things happening. So I will turn things over to Ms. Flynn.
Good evening, Dr. Murphy, Chairwoman Cannonanen, and members of the Board. Thank you so much for taking time to listen to Library Services tonight. Library Services has very simple goals. We support the work of the classroom, and we support children. If you look at the picture in the bottom left, I think we've done a good job with this young Our librarians work in partnerships throughout the year to observe one another and share their best practices. Last year, we began a campaign to communicate what we do through the hashtag #APSlibrariansconnect. We connect to literacy. We connect to the greater world. We connect to technology, and we connect to the whole child. Librarians are leaders in our community who frequently present at conferences, write in professional publications, and pursue career-enhancing opportunities such as the National Board and CAP. Ah, data. In 2015, 2016, for the first time, we circulated more than 1 million books. We also repeated that in 2016, 2017. While it's not actually a big jump from 970,000 to a million, it's a million! And that's kind of excited, exciting. It also makes for very appreciated, very hardworking, and very tired library assistants who do much of the shelving for those books. New tools have allowed us to disaggregate our circulation by various demographic groups. Female students do check out slightly more books than male students. ESAL Hild students actually check out more books than the general population. Special Ed students check out fewer groups, fewer books than non-identified groups, and this is an area of awareness and growth for us. And differences in racial and ethnic groups are actually not statistically relevant, although students identifying as Hispanic appear to check out slightly more books by a very small margin. On this page, you'll see the numbers on the left, which are not particularly flashy, but they are important. They show the work that is going on to keep our libraries current and relevant to classroom instruction. The digital information on the right shows exponential growth for the use of databases and a steady growth in the use of eBooks and e-Audio Books. Watching these numbers carefully will allow us to make decisions about holdings in the coming years. The notable thing about the data on this page is that every bullet reflects partnerships with the Arlington Public Library, which we consider to be a critical partner in bridging the literacy divide. I simply cannot end this presentation without giving a huge shout-out to facilities. They are helping to transform our instructional spaces into vibrant, engaging libraries where students really want to be. They are helping us modernize by making everything mobile, which will serve us well as education grows and shifts in the coming years. A big bravo to John Chadwick and his team. Libraries are very busy places, and our librarians have started the year active and running. We have already had four authors come, and we had over 100 grandparents show up at Drew Model School for the Grandparents Literacy Event. As we move forward, we look to build on the foundation of the past few years with targets which represent the APS strategic goals, as well as support our fairly unique program. We also hope to go green by putting in place emailed overdos with the help from Raj and the Tech Services Team. And I end this presentation the way every good librarian does, by asking, what will you be reading today? Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any speakers?
You do, we have one speaker on this topic, Ms. Ingrigant.
Good evening to Dr. Cannon, School Board Chair, members of the School Board, Dr. Murphy and Executive Leadership Team. My name is Ingrigant, but tonight I'm speaking simply as a community member, a native Arlingtonian, one who finds reading something that I've loved all my life. As I look at this presentation, I give kudos to Ms. Flynn and Dr. Naturis, but I challenge us to look at what we're presenting to our community members. When I look at certain things that are coming out of our office from APS, I have to challenge myself to say, are we being accountable for what's really going on in our school systems? And since we're talking about librarians, we've had two librarians who were Teachers of the Year last year. We've had some Arthur visits that she's already played out, but I would like to see the data that breaks down, that it may not matter to you, but I challenge you to give me the data that breaks down what students are reading what. And race is not always an issue, but it is, because I would like to see how many students that look like me are reading and what books, and have there been any increases? Because when I travel from school to school, and we have many members and many teachers who are AEA members, and I'm not speaking as AEA, but I also look at the students who have a love for learning, and are we challenging them to continue to read and do what's best for them? The audiobooks that are going to our sped kids, are we also challenging them to look at books where they can read at their own level? And so I would like to see some data, and I'm not asking publicly, I will definitely put it in writing, to see what it looks like. And are we definitely creating and connecting and innovating with our librarians to make them feel a part of this team? And then are we highlighting and showcasing exactly what they're doing, not just in some pictures, but are we looking at the entire librarian system in Arlington County? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board Colleagues, questions? Mr. Lander.
Good evening, Ms. Flynn, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
You know, I'm not too bad. Not too bad. The Redskins and the Cowboys lost this past weekend, so that's always good. Looking forward to that baseball team locally to lose tomorrow night. But my question is with regard to the librarian services. We have a Color of Leadership Conference coming up for our girls of color, and we invited the Librarian of Congress, Dr. Hayton.
Yes.
And I'm hoping, keeping my fingers crossed, that she will be able to accommodate our young ladies. My question to you is that we won't know for a little while before the conference if she'll be able to come. If for some reason, her schedule does not align with the conference, I would like to partner with you to ensure that we can get her here on another occasion, because I think that her message about librarians being the original internet and inspiring our children to read is one that they would benefit from tremendously in her role as a woman of color that ascended to a position that no woman of color or no man of color has ever served in that position. So that's something that I would like to pursue, and I'm willing to support it, as I did when we reached out to her. But that's something I think that as we seek to be more proactive on our conversation about literacy and the significance of reading, I think she would be a good motivator to our students, and I think if, if not this opportunity, which I'm hoping she can take advantage of, I would like to work with you to get her here and schedule some opportunity to have students, especially I think at the middle school level, because they can appreciate it, sit down in a room with her and be able to engage with her and find out how to navigate that path. So that's something I'm going to ask you and Dr. Naturis to work with me on. So monitor your inbox then.
And she's a baseball fan.
Probably not of the local team.
After, well, no, it was local, and when she got the appointment, the first picture she took was with one of our local teams, and I tweeted it out.
Probably for political reasons.
Colleagues, Ms. Toledo.
So you asked what book we were reading? So I just ordered two books that I'm very excited about. Now, mind you, as a School Board member, we have reading lists. I call it professional development, so I have about 20 books that I've been given to read since I started. I mean, I'm going through those slowly, but I like to read for fun. So these books I ordered to inspire me and remind me to read for fun. One is called The House on Mango Street, which I'm very excited, I could not believe I hadn't read it. And then the other one is called Latino Leaders Speak: Personal Stories of Struggle and Triumph. So I'm really excited about that, having newly been a Latino leader in a new position here. So thank you for asking. I hope that people continue to read. I fell in love with reading in 4th grade with The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe, and it was something that I struggled with prior to that, and it was a teacher that inspired me, and now I'm an avid, avid reader. So thank you for the work that you do.
Anyone else? Ms. Van Dorn?
I'll just say, I'm having the pleasure of reading Crime and Punishment for the fifth time.
Wow, that's a commitment. But so interesting in the current.
I'd be, I'd be reading for Washingtonian students.
Yeah, that's good. Mr. Goldstein, your books, reading anything? What are you reading? Come on.
Like you, I have a tall stack of books that I've been given that I need to, need to have read a long time ago. And I'm slowly, very slowly, working my way through that. that list. Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, that was sort of a joke about, it's, it's like, if I counted up the number of times I went to the Outdoor Lab, it would probably be many, many more times than the kids I have. So Crime and Punishment, I've now cycled through many times. But I'm just going to put another plug in for the book, The Anatomy of Peace, because I keep going back to that. I keep giving it to friends of mine to read, and in terms of an approach of how to take on the challenges we have of a growing community.
Yeah.
And the way we can operate together and the tools we can use to do that, it's, it's a great story, and then a great set of tools.
So perfect for the modern age. Yeah. That's right. I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember, um, here's the thing. Um, I don't remember the titles of books I've read. I've been sitting here trying to come up with them. Okay, so let me just start by saying this is totally a cliche. I am reading Hillary Clinton's book right now. Good for you. What Happened? Nope. Um, and, but I was trying to, you know, to follow up with that with, um, I bought a couple of books in Boulder, and, um, I cannot remember the names, but one of them was A Modern Take on Pride and Prejudice, which is really great, so I'll share the title with you when I look it up. And the other one, um, I, I was trying to remember the, the culture, some folks in the mountains, um, an old, old culture where apparently women were literally allowed to decide they wanted to live life as men, and they were fully respected as men, you know, and this is back when. You. That's cool. Send that to me. I'm gonna, I'll, I'll send them to you. It's, uh, some really interesting books, um, so, but I actually have a couple of comments too.
Is Spirit Patrick?
No.
Eligible.
Eligible. Did you, did you read it?
I haven't yet.
It's, it's fun. It's fun. Yeah, that's the, the Pride and Prejudice one, obviously. The other one is something like The Committed Virgin, I think, is the title. So I wanted to comment on your last slide, which you don't need to pull up, but it refers to libraries as safe spaces. Yes. And I think we do not want to forget that, that in school there are kids who need that safe space, and it's wonderful. I know we do a beautiful job with those environments, um, so let, just keep that up. And, um, I'm thinking about the speaker's comments, especially about the types of books kids are reading, and, you know, um, if, if we could see more about that. Now, we don't necessarily think about libraries and, and, and kids checking out books as we want them to check out stuff they love, um, you know, and just, and develop their reading skills, but also do it by enjoying reading. So, um, I'd be really interested in more information, um, but I'm not sure how we want to define our goals, and maybe you know. Well, and unfortunately, I mean, we can, it took three years, but we got there, thank you, Raj, um, to break it down by demographics, but we cannot see what they check out. This is actually an element of the Patriot Act. When it first came into being, a bunch of librarians in Washington State challenged the federal government and said, no, you can't come and look at people's library accounts. I don't care what the Patriot Act says. Um, and so in the state of Virginia, which protects people's privacy, there's actually a law that says that once a book is returned, it is stripped of the connection between who checked it out and the book. You can see the number of circulations, you can see how many books a kid has checked out, but you can't see the connection between the two of them. So, um, we actually have no means of knowing what the kids have been checking out. One of the ongoing discussions, however, between librarians and English language arts has been the leveling, uh, because there's a huge push, uh, but nationwide on leveling. And from a library perspective, we want to support instruction, but we also want choice reading, so we've been working to kind of tread that middle ground. We added more leveling information to our catalog to support English language arts, but by the same token, we've negotiated with teachers so that kids can get two books, one at the level and one choice regardless of level. Um, and I think that's an important thing to kind of keep in mind, uh, that we are pushing, I am certainly pushing, that kids be allowed to check out a book even if someone feels like it may be too hard for them, because there's a lot of literature that says reading up can be a good thing, so. Absolutely. Um, so, uh, and then just to follow up on that then, you can, you can identify the most popular books. You know how, how many times books have been checked out? Yes. You just have no way of tying it to students, so any kind of demographic relationships, we don't know. But we do know, we, we could see what the most popular books are if we wanted to. Captain Underpants, it never changes. It's always been that way. Mr. Goldstein, you had a question?
Thank you. Um, what you said about you complimenting Mr. Chadwick about the, um, the new, uh, spaces, uh, piqued my interest. So I have a lot of librarians in my life. My mother's a retired librarian. My next-door neighbor's a retired librarian. I have an old friend from high school who was a college librarian, and so I've had these conversations over the years many times, and that conversation is the changing nature of libraries, especially with the rise of, um, uh, electronic media. And so, um, do you anticipate these physical spaces for libraries changing and needing to change as we continue to build new schools? Because we're kind of anticipating, you know, building more schools.
Well, we've had quite a number of them. Uh, when I walked into this office, it was Ashlon, then it was Discovery, this year it was, last year it was McKinley, now it's Abington, so we're really making progress. Um, we are changing them and making them mobile. You know, everybody's into Makerspaces right now, that's the thing. But ten years down the road, who knows? Twenty years down the road, who knows? But if you're talking about the conversion of print to electronics, that's an interesting discussion, and that's why I'm tracking those numbers. Um, yes, we've seen a tremendous growth in using electronic resources for research, and to that end, quite a number of librarians are ditching their encyclopedias and their almanacs, um, and maybe they keep an atlas around, because, you know, it's fun to have an atlas or a globe. Um, but we're seeing reference collections shrink appreciably. We're seeing magazine collections shrink appreciably. But the interesting side of this is we're actually seeing fiction collections grow, and we're seeing nonfiction for choice reading grow. Um, and one of the reasons I do exit, I wasn't able to fit it into this presentation, but I've been doing about two hundred exit interviews every year that I've been in this job with fifth, eighth, and twelfth graders at selected schools. And consistently, we're seeing a real divide at all grades, at all levels, of people who prefer print and people who prefer eBooks. Um, we do have a growing percentage of particularly young men who like eBooks, but I would say it's, it's maintained a very steady fifty-fifty split, and that includes high schoolers, and you would think these millennials who are on their phones all the, all the time would prefer books in electronics, and we're not finding that to be the case. Um, so I don't see libraries going away or shrinking much more than they are, have been shrunk, um, but I do see a real change in what they are and how they operate and what they provide. Um, we're actually seeing some, some of the newer schools now are at a sixty-forty or seventy-thirty for fiction and choice reading versus research materials.
And so these changes that you're seeing, are you documenting and communicating them back to facilities and operations for when they are planning the, the next new school?
I meet with facilities a lot. I love facilities. We go down, I go down there, because there's so many projects on the, you know, so I'm like, this is the Wilson Project, and this is the Alice West Fleet, and, and, and they're really great. I mean, I go in and the architects sit there, and they're, they're like, tell us about what you need, tell us about percentages, tell us about use, and they just kind of take it all in and then turn out these gorgeous libraries. So, yeah, that's been, for my part, I hope for their part, a really good relationship.
Great, great. Glad to hear it. Thank you very much.
Sure. Okay, all right. Um, that completes our monitoring items. We're moving on to action. Our first action is the School Board 2019 Budget Direction. Are we gonna pull that up? There have been no changes since, uh, we looked at the budget direction as information two weeks ago. Does anyone need me to summarize this? There have been no changes. Uh, Ms. Elliott, are there any speakers on budget direction? Okay, any questions or comments before we vote? May I have a motion to adopt the School Board 2019 Budget Direction?
Yes, I move that the Board adopt the proposed School Board 2019 Budget Priorities.
Direction. I'm sorry. Budget Direction, yes.
Budget Direction.
Ms. Vandoren seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Um, our next action item is the process to develop criteria for the APS Naming Policy fifty dash one point one zero. Uh, Dr. Murphy, is there any additional information on this item?
No, there's no additional information.
Okay, it is as it was presented two weeks ago. Do we have any speakers? Okay. Questions or comments, or a motion?
I have a motion. I move that the Board approve the proposed process to develop criteria for School Board Policy fifty dash one point one zero Naming of Facilities.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. And our last act, action item is to approve the charge and appointments to the Building Level Planning Committee for the new elementary school at Reed. Dr. Murphy?
Yes, I believe we have some updated information. I'm going to turn to Assistant Superintendent John Chadwick to provide some of the updates.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Good evening. Uh, I am just going to provide you with a few updates on some changes to the charge that we made as a result of the last board meeting, uh, of the comments of the last boarding and some things, and some things that we've heard since. So we have added Leeway Overly, Madison Manor, and Dominion Hills Civic Associations to the BLPC membership. Um, we've added community use as an element of defining adequate outdoor space. Um, we've added language that functional spaces be designed as adaptable as possible in order to accommodate future increases in enrollment. And rather than having the BLPC chair recommend a design to the School Board, we have changed that to state that the BLPC chair would provide letters at both schematic design and concept design phases that summarize the BLPC's comments, rather than provide a specific direction to the School Board. The recommendation is that you approve the membership, the charge, and the appointment of the chair. And our next steps, important next steps are October seventeenth, Joint County Board School Board Work Session, and then on October the twenty-fifth, the Joint BLPC PFRC kickoff. Uh, the three civic associations, core civic associations, those civic association members will be appointed to both the BLPC and the PFRC, and about every other meeting will be held jointly between the BLPC and the PFRC. Um, and the proposed chair is also a member of the PFRC and will be chair of the BLPC. We now have a project website up and running, and there's a link to it with some initial explanation of it on Engage at APSVA. Thank you.
Excellent. Do we have any speakers? Okay. Uh, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board approve the proposed charge and appointments to the Building Level Planning Committee for the new elementary school at Reed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And that brings us, thank you all very much for all of that. Um, we are now ready for our information items. We have two information items.
Do you want to have what people can see?
Uh, sure. We have, uh, Dr. Murphy, I believe it's the case that we have posted the, appointed the BLPC membership list on Board Docs.
That is correct. Yes.
People can look on Board Docs this evening.
Will, will there be eventually a page under Engage, like Reed or someplace, that people can easily go there? Because always people like to talk to the people they know who are on the committee.
Yes, there, um, is already a link from Engage to the Reed BLPC, and the members who have been appointed tonight will be posted tomorrow. There are a few that we will probably, we'll be bringing back to you, because we haven't, just haven't been able to get all the candidates. So that will likely be at the next board meeting.
Right, and we will probably do that on consent.
Yes.
Um, two information items. The first is the Contract Award for Construction Management Advisor Services for the new middle school at Stratford. Dr. Murphy?
Yes, I think I'm going to turn to, uh, Mr. Jeff Chambers, uh, to bring us this information item.
Good evening, Dr. Murphy and, and Board members. Um, we're presenting for information tonight, the Contract Award for, um, Construction Management Advisor Services for the new middle school at Stratford. They will basically be working with the construction manager at risk, as well as our team and the architects, uh, through the construction of the project to make sure that we're getting what we're paying for. We solicited proposals from three contractors who are on term contract. Uh, they all provided very good proposals. Uh, it was a difficult deliberation that we had going through that, but through evaluation of qualifications and price, we reached consensus on our recommendation, and we are recommending MBP Incorporated for the amount of six hundred and ninety, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars for the course of the project. Uh, the award is incorporated, uh, into the current funding and, uh, available and approved by the School Boards, no increase in funding is necessary. So it's within the budget that we had, uh, for the project.
The end. Okay, do we have any speakers? All right, Board colleagues, questions, comments? Thank you very much. This will be coming back to us, I assume, in two weeks for action, probably on consent.
Yes.
Yes.
One final item tonight, and that is the Children's School Memorandum of Understanding. Dr. Murphy?
Yes, let me turn to, uh, Ms. Peterson, and I want to thank her as well as Mr. Chadwick for their work on this particular item in relationship to the children's school. Uh, we have been, uh, working very diligently with, uh, the children's school, uh, leadership in getting to this point with a memorandum of an understanding, and, uh, Ms. Peterson is gonna kind of update us where we are, and I believe this is then slated to come back, uh, as an action item in two weeks.
Correct. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members. Dr. Murphy, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk about the Children's School Memorandum of Understanding. First thing I would like to talk about is a little bit of our background, what our current status is with the children's school and what our future plans are. As you may be aware, the children's school is a private, nonprofit, cooperative daycare program here in Arlington. It was founded thirty years ago to provide quality daycare services to our employees that were also affordable. So the tuition that TCS charges to employees is undermarket. Funding for TCS comes solely from its tuition, so they pay all of their operating expenses from tuition. They receive no other kind of funding. And most importantly to us here at APS, TCS partners with our Integration Station Preschool Special Education Program and provides inclusion opportunities for those students. The current status of the programs are that TCS and IS are currently co-located at the Reed Building, and as a result of our ever-growing enrollment, um, the School Board in its last CIP indicated that Reed should be turned into a new elementary school. And so therefore, all of the programs that are currently housed at Reed must leave the Reed Building at the end of the school year, and that includes both the children's school and Integration Station. The children's school has, um, decided that it will move to a new leased location in Arlington for next school year, and they would love to continue to partner with us and Integration Station at the new location. After a number of meetings over many months, uh, we have come to an agreement in principle with the children's school. Uh, I, the Integration Station program will move with the children's school to its new location next year. Uh, we will pay tuition to the children's school for allowing those students to be integrated into their classrooms, and we will work together, uh, with the children's school. Our facilities, uh, team will work with the children's school to design the new space so that, um, both of us have an input into what the new space will look like. All of these details, and I, I cannot give you much more detail than that right now, because the Memorandum of Understanding is being constructed currently. It is under legal review, and as soon as we have all of those details put together, we will have that available to you for your approval on October the nineteenth.
Thank you. Are there any speakers? Okay, Board colleagues, questions? Ms. Toledo.
I just want to thank all of you who worked on this, uh, to getting us to this point. We're really, I know as a School Boarder, we really appreciate the work that you guys did to make this happen, so thank you.
Mr. Goldstein.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I also want to thank everybody involved for making this happen, and I want to, um, kind of make a little, um, statement or notice specifically to two, um, community groups. And the first are all those people that we heard from over the last many- And the first are all those people that we heard from over the last many months who were advocating that we keep the children's school and the Integration Station together. And I, you know, I know you were frustrated, and I could feel your frustration as you came to meetings and talked to us, and we sat there poker-faced and didn't give any indication except assurances that we all want that to happen, too. But in reality, there were a lot of things going on behind the scenes. There were negotiations that we couldn't talk about, and, you know, we wanted it to happen, and we are right on the verge of making it happen. So I'm delighted. I know the community who has been agitating for that is delighted about that, because that's all we heard from them about the necessity and the benefit of keeping those two programs together. And the second group, I want to point this out to, are, you know, the folks who were here earlier tonight talking about the intersection problem at South Second and South Irving, to whom we've also said we are interested in a, you know, solution as you are, and that there are lots of things going on, and I can feel your frustration about the lack of a rapid solution to this, but we are working on it, and there are things happening, and we will have a satisfactory conclusion, and hopefully sooner rather than later. So thank you very much.
So when you give a poker face, people should assume something's happening. Poker face means something's happening.
You're holding good cards, always.
Excellent. All set? Okay. Thank you so much. We really are thrilled that this is moving forward, and, you know, we always said all along that we were very interested in keeping this partnership alive, so this is really great.
And may I just add?
Absolutely.
A big thank you to John Chadwick?
Yes.
And his team for backing me up and helping me, helping our team get to this conclusion.
Great. Thank you so much. That was our last information item. We're now at the point of new business. Is there any new business? Mr. Lander, do you want to wish the Nationals good luck for their National League Division Series?
Actually, I do. I do, because it will take a lot of luck, so I would like to wish the local baseball team luck, and hopefully they'll do better and not drop the ball like the local football team did just recently on Monday night. So with that, I bid you all good night.
Excellent. That's a pretty nice statement for the Nationals. I think we've got this. Okay, seeing no other new business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.